And I would like to have the special privilege of nominating Sandy Stone for the position of President in her final year of her fourth term.
Fifth.
Fifth term.
But who's counting?
Would there be any other nominations for the position of President? Hearing none, is there a motion to close nominations? Mr. Schiefer?
Second.
Mr. Murtagh, second. Roll call?
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murtagh?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
I'll abstain.
Mrs. Stone?
I was gonna vote yes.
I don't think you want to be.
Congratulations, Mrs. Stone.
Oh, thank you.
And the board will now entertain nominations for the position of Vice President.
We're nominating Paul Johnson.
Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murtagh?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
All right, and next we'll have the oath of office for Sandy Stone. You can go on this rise.
I think it just has to be me and you.
It is just.
After my nineteenth year, I think it's just me and you.
Do you solemnly swear you will support the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President and vice President for the Board of Education in the Cyrus City School District, Crawford County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and set office until your successor is allowed to be unqualified? If so, please answer "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Let's trade.
Okay. That's yours. Well, thank you. This'll be an interesting year, I'm sure. It's been a while since I've sat here, so bear with me. We will go ahead and go to the business items. Mr. Campbell?
Mrs. Stone, it's my recommendation at the Board of Education approve items A through P under the Business Section of the agenda.
Do we have a motion to accept items A through P?
So moved. Support?
I guess before we vote, we need to appoint. We need to go down to J, Legislative Liaison. Anyone interested in that? Other than Adam? Do you want?
I'm sorry, I can stay with that, that doesn't bother me. I'd like to stay on the Athletic Council.
Okay. And I would like to stay on Pioneer, if that's all right with everybody. Who else would like to serve on the Athletic Council? Okay. And that leaves us with a Student Achievement Representative and a Wellness Committee Representative. Brad, this?
I'll stay on the Wellness.
You'd like to stay, okay. And Student Achievement, Paul?
I'll continue with that unless someone's dying.
Everybody's just jumping up and down. Okay, I think that takes care of them all. Do we have any discussion on anything else?
Do we do, EEOC Officer?
That's Kevin.
Oh yeah, there it is, sorry.
Okay, roll, or, yeah, roll call please.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Murtagh?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes. And the motion passes. Do we have a resolution to adjourn?
So moved.
Support?
Roll call, please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Murtagh?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes. And we are adjourned out of our organization. Do we want to take a couple minutes, or do we want to go ahead and go on to the next one?
Go ahead and proceed.
Okay, guess what I'm gonna do? It is time to call our regularly scheduled January fourteenth, two thousand and three meeting, two thousand and thirteen, meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Murtagh?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have the pledge, but I really think we should.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys are going back to paper, huh?
It's not working?
No, it works. Only you brought your laptop.
This is great technology. Requires no power. Completely affordable anywhere.
Do we have a motion to approve our December twentieth, two thousand and twelve minutes?
Support?
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Murtagh?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the Treasurer's Financial Report dated December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve?
So moved.
Support?
And Ryan, do you have any comments for us this evening?
I do, I've got a couple things to not discuss with you. First and foremost, you'll notice that we spent four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars more brought in in the general fund in December. So again, cautionary tone, continue to true up the first half of the year, moving into the second half. It's just something to be aware of. Second, I guess, major item that the district can do for the community is refinancing bonds which were sold back in two thousand and six. Kevin, I met with the investment banker this past week. And the potential savings right now, just a little bit over a half a million dollars. There's no benefit to the district on our side for cash flow, but again, it's a savings that will directly benefit the community if we refinance. There's no cost to the district to do this. Typically, it's not done for ten years' end, but because of the interest rate environment and when these bonds were sold, there is a one-time refunding option that's available. Given where we're at with interest rates, the fact that there is a savings, I think it makes a lot of sense to look at this very, very hard and move forward. Again, it's not gonna benefit our finances per se out of the general fund, it's gonna benefit the taxpayers, they're gonna be the ones that realize the savings.
So the taxpayers will realize the savings of almost half a million dollars?
Correct. The projections will true. Right now, the first investment banker we met with was Ken Cacho from RBC who did the original offering. His projections are five hundred and thirty-three thousand, net of all fees. I did speak with another individual in Columbus. Again, I think given the size of this, it's proven to give a second opinion, look at the savings. His initial numbers were right around eight hundred thousand dollars in savings. So again, I don't know what the difference is, fees, et cetera. Some things that may change that, I had a meeting with Mrs. Hildebrandt two weeks ago, and she provided me with some updated valuations for the district, taking a hit on our evaluation of about seventeen, sixteen million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand in total valuation. So that rolls us back, as I went back through to a two thousand and six, two thousand and seven level, just because of the downturn in the economy, property values, et cetera. So, we still face some challenges with that, we're gonna see impacts with revenue moving forward. She did not have any updated numbers on how that impacts currently, these things in place, permanent improvement, et cetera. But Kevin and I can back into those, and today we're talking about a twelve thousand dollar hit.
Yeah, right now, when we pass bond issue, we pass a half a mil maintenance, half mil PI. Difference now is, as opposed to what we're currently bringing in, which is about sixty-seven or sixty-eight thousand per half mil for each of those accounts, preliminarily, we're looking a little less than sixty-two thousand dollars per half mil now. So you can see, that's gonna major, have a major impact on the amount of money that we bring in.
So you can see, we're taking some hits. Two positives, we've got a big opportunity to save the community substantial dollars. Second, casino revenue is projected to hit this month, and before we started, it was thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Again, I haven't seen that yet, it's gonna be two payments a year, so roughly sixty-two, sixty-three thousand dollars a year if things continue in that direction.
Questions? Can't double down on the casino money or anything like that.
I seen it.
Somebody would go there, Paul.
I would encourage you to.
I did.
There we go. So we'll continue to work with the investment bankers, once we feel comfortable. Kevin, we'll bring some of your new kind of updates you guys from your perspective as well.
Well, I think if we can save the community some money.
It's substantial.
From what they tell us, that really the window is really the next two, about two months, so if something happens, we'll probably bring something to you, maybe at the February meeting, to present, but we don't have to make any decisions. But I think it's, as I said, proven to taxpayers to present it and see if we move that direction.
Size of the offering, the feds talking about tightening unemployment hits around seven percent, so there is again, a window. Be great if unemployment. Probably exercise this option while it's available.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Murtagh?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
I don't believe we have an addendum to the agenda. We can go ahead and go on down to commendations, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you very much, President Stone. I'd like to, being that this January is School Board Recognition Month, I'd like to recognize the Board of Education for their hard work and dedication to the students of the Star City Schools, and I have a certificate here that I'd like to present each of the board members. First up, I'd like to present Mrs. Stone, entering her twentieth year of service to the district. Thank you very much for your entire service. Next, I'd like to present Dr. Johnson, Paul, I believe is at six and a half years of service as a board member of the district. Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Murtagh, Brad Murtagh, is starting here, is his first full year, newly appointed. Thank you very much for your service to the district. Thank you. Mr. Schiefer, I believe nine years down, enters tenth year, service to the district. Thank you, thank you very much. And Adam Stone, starting second year of service to the district. You make me feel very old.
Thanks much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stone. We'll make this announcement at the end of the meeting, but I also would like to invite anybody out to the January twenty-sixth Education Foundation Chicken Barbecue Dinner. At that eat, during the game that evening with Colonel Crawford, there's two things going on, we have the Education Foundation Chicken Dinner, where there'll be student performances occurring from four-thirty and six. Then we have the Home Boys Basketball that night, and the board will be publicly recognized during the basketball game that evening. So, once again, thank you for everyone for their, your service to the students and staff of the Star City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll go ahead and go to committee reports, the legislative report, Mr. Stone?
Thank you. The hundred and twenty-ninth of the General Assembly, actually adjourned on December the twentieth, and just reopened last week on January the seventh. In terms of new legislation, there's really nothing out there brand new, but State House in a week hasn't managed to screw everything up at this point, so we'll give it plenty of time. That's my report.
Thank you. Athletics, Mr. Schiefer or Mr. Johnson?
Just want to reiterate what Kevin said, the only thing I really have to report on is Education Foundation Chicken Barbecue in Crawford County, so that's my report.
I have nothing to report today.
Okay, Student Achievement, well, I guess it's my turn, if I go in one. Pioneer has not met yet this year, so I do not have a report. Dr. Johnson?
Student Achievement, I don't have much to report, except it sounds like they still are tweaking this third grade guarantee, and with regard to the credentials that teachers will need in order to serve kids that haven't met that criteria. And apparently, it's gonna be like a bridge year or something, but I don't know, they keep tweaking, unless Adam says, give them time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Wellness, Mr. Murtagh?
Nothing to report, the next meeting is scheduled for the eighteenth of January.
And our new student representative, Elizabeth?
Just finished out the first half of the year, getting ready to start the third quarter. Students, or the seniors just finished their senior papers, so we're all very glad that that thing is done and over. Mainly just reading some books, doing some kind of simple stuff now, that's the big thing out of the way. DECA has a big competition coming up this month. We are very excited about it and can't wait to go. And when we did the exams last week, students were able to pretty much come and go as long as they didn't have an exam with their parents' knowledge, their parents had to sign a note, and then they could go, they didn't have to stay for lunch, they didn't have to stay for other classes, because teachers weren't really doing much of anything. And since the Connecticut shooting, I've heard some conversations of students who are concerned and want to learn more on how the school is protecting them, on what they're doing to keep them safe during their school day. And that's all I have for today.
All right, thank you, welcome, it's nice to have you here. I was sitting there thinking before the meeting started, I think you might be the first female student representative we've had.
It's real special.
Am I right? So, it's nice to have you here, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't believe anybody wanted to address the board this evening, correct? Okay. Then we will go ahead to the Personnel Certificate, Staff Items, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, President Stone, members of the board, I'm going to cover a few things in House Bill five fifty-five, changes to the teacher evaluation, and it also touches upon third grade reading guarantee, and there's a handout coming around that summarizes some of the With regards to the teacher evaluation piece, the first four bullet points on the first page there, really are the highlights. There is some clarification in law now that draws attention to the non-renewal notices, and that is to prevail over any conflicting provisions of collective bargaining agreement entered on or after the effective date of the bill. So I wanted to clarify that you couldn't bargain something that was contrary to law, so that clarifies that. The second bullet point there, there is changes with regards to value added, dimensions for student growth. If you remember, the two pieces of the teacher evaluation, fifty percent of it is teacher performance, the other piece is how the students achieve, the student achievement piece. Where in the past, or prior to this House Bill five fifty-five, they allowed it up to the Evaluation Committee or local school districts to determine how much of that value added piece plays into that fifty percent. They've really clarified that now, and says for one year, you can have at least twenty-six percent of the value added part of the teacher evaluation, but after year one, all of that information, all of the value added piece must be used in the student growth piece of the teacher evaluation. So if I'm an eighth grade math teacher, I know that how my students perform, if that's all I teach is eighth grade math, how my students perform, that will impact half of my evaluation. There'll be not, there will be no longer any local SLLs or student learning objectives, SLOs, student learning objectives to be part of that fifty percent anymore. So they really tighten that down and said you must use value added information if you have that. And we were looking at the number of teachers that fall in that A category, and remember, A category is that if you have value added, you must use it. Forty-one out of our hundred and two teachers have value added information going into next year. Now, it increases after that, but really for next year, we're looking at forty-one out of a hundred and two teachers. Those other teachers really can be split into two categories. If I don't have value added data, such as an art teacher at the high school, I'm a fall in what's called Category C, which is all locally developed student learning objectives to make up that other fifty percent. I know we spent quite a bit of time in our work session talking about the new teacher evaluation piece, but I just wanted to bring to you the new changes there. The last two bullet points really just exempts adult education teachers and substitute teachers from the teacher evaluation project, or the new evaluation system. The details on the next two pages, if you want to read them, are up to you, but really, the major impacts are those first bullet points. If you flip to the back page, these are the House Bill five fifty-five changes to the third grade reading guarantee. What it, the attempt was to expand the option teachers can use to demonstrate their ability to provide reading instruction to students reading below grade level. So, if you see there for two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, the difference between what's required that year and then going into fourteen, fifteen. But the major paragraph I want to point out is that second paragraph, any teacher with a student retained by the third grade reading guarantee, or on a reading improvement and monitoring plan, they call a RIT plan, must have been actively engaged in reading instruction of students for the previous three years, and met at least one of the following criteria. So, if I'm a first-year teacher, I don't fit that criteria. So we have some young teachers that just started their teaching career, that cannot educate a student next year if their student is on a RIT plan, a reading improvement and monitoring plan. Now, for the first year, it's just those third graders that are retained, but for the second year, it's any teacher K through three that has a student on a reading improvement plan. We have, I want to guess, we'll have upwards of thirty, forty percent of our students, more than that. So, you think about the ramifications, now they do have a clause in there that you can submit a plan to ODE to, in order to address how you're going to get around this requirement, but it's quite, it's quite an alarming piece that teachers are gonna have to have, and it's not just three years of teaching reading at any point in your career, it says it has to be the last, the previous three years, consecutive three years. And the other piece is that, you know, where we thought there was some legal room with regards to the reading endorsement, but really they're tightening that thing down and say you must have reading endorsement or passed a yet-to-be-determined test proving that you're able to teach reading. So, Donna and I are gonna be meeting with the elementary administration next Tuesday to go over these changes, and then we need to have a hard talk with our elementary teachers, especially our K to three teachers, really any elementary teacher, because unfortunately, if we have an upper elementary teacher that's been teaching reading and fits that criteria, that we may have to make some staffing decisions to put them at a lower grade level if we have students that need to be educated that are on a reading improvement plan. So, these are some major changes. So, like I said, anytime legislation has the time, opportunity to mess with stuff and try to clarify it, there's new requirements that come up for us to have to abide by, so.
I'm sure they send a check with all those meetings.
No, they're all.
I'm seeing a shock, I can't believe it.
The third piece of House Bill five fifty-five that's not on your handout, but I'd just like to talk about is some report card changes. And starting in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, they raised the proficiency benchmark to eighty percent, that used to be seventy-five percent. But you'll also note that that's when the new assessments come in, are supposed to be more difficult for students to be able to pass, they've increased the benchmark to eighty percent. We'll also know that we're gonna be moving to letter grades, and in order to earn an A rating, we have to have ninety percent benchmarks for the indicators in that, and they have to determine B, C, and D, but we know that anything below sixty percent's gonna be an F. But they haven't determined where, is that correct, Donna, that I?
They determined C, but they haven't determined B.
B or D. So.
Go figure.
But there are gonna be new, there's six new components to the report card. The first component is gap closing, which will be annual measurable objectives. The second piece is achievement, which is the old performance index. The third piece is graduation rate, which will be both a four-year and a five-year graduation rate. Fourth component is progress, and that'll be value added. The fifth one is K through three literacy, which will be such factors as a third grade reading guarantee progress. And the sixth piece is prep for success, and that's gonna be measured, supposedly just reported only, such as college admission tests, do enrollment, industry credentials, honors diploma, the number of students taking part in AP courses and their scores, and other measurable points for college and career readiness.
How many, do we know, do we have any idea how much that stuff will, especially the last stuff you were asking about, how much that will weigh in, because a lot of that stuff will control?
Right now, they're saying it's gonna be reported, but not necessarily scored.
It's not a part of that calculation?
That's correct, they're just gonna report, like you had X amount of students that are in IB, well, we don't, we're not an IB school.
Right, right.
So that wouldn't be, they're just reporting that last section, the prep for success section, but those are all gonna be on the report card, we just won't get a letter grade and go into the calculation of our school or district designation.
And that was, I guess that was one of the things that confused me about that legislation, was I thought that they were putting within our grade, a lot of those things that, one, don't apply to us, and two, we can't control.
I do have in my notes, though, and I don't know how, that they were going to report for the thirteen, fourteen school year, but in fourteen, fifteen, they were gonna give us a grade for dual enrollment, PSEO, PSEO, as well as AP participation and the scores of students that, yes, and that wasn't gonna be reported. So, there are some wiggle rooms, and I still don't think we have heard that section of the report card cleared up yet. But right now, they're telling us for next year, it's just all being reported.
And I don't know if there's, Donna, if there's anything else you'd like to add? The House Bill five fifty-five really was the teacher evaluation, the third grade reading guarantee, and the report card changes. They really pushed a lot of things through right at the tail end there to help us out, so. Is there anything else you'd like to clarify?
I, I'd like to take this time, though, just to say a couple things. I have to congratulate Mr. Rule, Mr. Souter, because what is stated now in that, with the third grade guarantee, they make sure that every student is there to take that test. There are times when we have a student that is not there during the regular There are times when we have a student that is not there during the regular OAA window or the makeup, and they work very hard making sure those students are there. Now, the law says if a student is not there during the regular week or makeup week, it's an automatic zero and an automatic retention for those kids. So, that's, that's crucial. So, in the past, our two administrators, building administrators and teachers alike, everybody's worked very hard to make sure those kids are there. It is now more crucial than ever. And we've got those, remember the fall, we reported that we have 15 students right now that have met that, that haven't met the criteria of being promoted. So, when we're looking at teachers for next year, we hope certainly all those students will pass. But we're going to look at, we're going to have some staffing questions to deal with because there's going to be, it's the worst scenario, none of them, we have 15 students that have to be educated with a teacher that has a reading endorsement.
In the last part of my report, before I think of any questions you may have, I'd like to just have Mr. Henderson speak a couple minutes on a unique opportunity we had this today with the secondary staff, the poverty simulation we're telling you about.
This morning and this afternoon, we had a couple ladies out of Columbus that work with regional food bank in that area come up and run what's called a poverty simulation. In that poverty simulation, our teaching staff were given scenarios, life scenarios, they were put into families, whether they were two, three-person families up to five-person families, and given a toolkit of scenarios about what their income level was, what age their children were, what their employment status was, and we're forced to go through a month worth of time in an hour and deal with the, deal with the similar situations that our families in poverty deal with, wondering how they're going to afford transportation to get their, to get their children to the doctor, but then get back to work and have somebody watch their younger children while their older children are in school, and all these scenarios, how to afford daycare, how to afford food, how to deal with a situation if there was a healthcare issue. And our teachers were subject to that, those types, same types of decisions that our families in our community have to make. And afterwards, we had the ladies that facilitated it, asked the teachers questions about their experience, and we had people, a person was designated to be involved in illegal activities, drug dealer, would steal things, and people would have to, would have to somehow resolve these situations and come up with a way to feed themselves and feed their family and deal with the basic amenities from education to healthcare. And all of our teachers participated a half of in the morning and a half of, the other half in the afternoon. We had community members in. Chief Teetz came in and participated this morning with the, with the simulation, and our teachers were, they were outstanding participants. And ultimately, our goal was to hopefully have teachers build an awareness and kind of develop an empathy for what our families are struggling with on a day-to-day basis here in our community, because we know that, we see it on a day-to-day basis, our students bringing the impact of poverty in with them in terms of their demeanor, their motivation level, their ability to concentrate on what we expect them to do. We talked about House Bill 555 and all the changes here, and we expect these kids to do these things, yet when they leave here, they're wondering maybe where their next meal is going to come from, or how am I going to be able to, you know, do I have a place to stay tonight? And so, we wanted the teaching staff to develop kind of, maybe those that weren't aware or maybe have forgotten an awareness of what it is really our families are dealing with in our community. It went really well. That ends my report. Thanks for your time. Any questions?
I noticed I kind of skipped over your report. Good pick-up there.
No problem. I didn't know. Oh, you said I have to address the board.
Oh, I did. Yeah. Just kind of went right over there.
I get the hint.
We will go ahead and go to personnel certified staff items. Mr. Campbell?
President Stone, members of the board, it's my recommendation to board approve item A under the personnel certified staff section of the agenda.
Do we have a motion to accept item A?
So moved.
Any questions? Comment? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Murdeth?
Yes.
Yes. The motion passes. Personnel classified staff.
President Stone, it's my recommendation to board of education approve item A under the personnel classified staff section of the agenda.
Do we have a motion to accept personnel classified staff item?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Murdeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
That item also passes. And we'll go now to the business items. Mr. Kimball?
President Stone, it's my recommendation to board of education approve items A through E under the business section of the agenda.
Do we have a motion to accept items A through E under the business items?
So moved.
Support.
Any comments or questions regarding these items?
Just wonder if you could elaborate a little more on item A, which is the architectural services for the Lincoln Building, and talk a little bit about how those renovations fit into our master plan for the facilities.
Well, first of all, I'll have Ryan speak a little bit to what the funds that we're identifying possibly using for some of these renovations at the face of the Lincoln Building.
Yeah, I believe total project cost right now is estimated right around $137,000. Where those funds are going to come from is our permanent improvement fund. Those funds are really restricted to any kind of an item that has a useful life of five years or more, typically, you know, building improvements, parking lots, moves, infrastructure items. So, we've got those funds available for this. Kevin, also, why do you feel that's important?
Well, one of the things that we need to do in a district is to protect our investments of our facilities, and one of those facilities is the Lincoln Building here. When phase one of the renovations, which is what you're sitting in, was done, what wasn't accomplished at that time is the heating system. We were still operating under a very inefficient boiler system, which is not working at present right now. It's probably the reason why we had to move preschool out of here. We also have a number, this is the only storage we have in the district. We have very little storage at the elementary school, at the secondary school, food service. This ends up being files for the district. This ends up being the place that we house a lot of those. We have files sitting in rooms that are not currently heated, and so part of the renovation is to protect this investment, replace some of the old windows, some of the doors, and put some heating back into these classrooms. Because you never know, this may have to be a swing space for a larger class that comes through. We may have to reconsider where we're educating preschool or other programs, so the bigger picture of it, we can't use the permanent improvement money to offset general fund for salaries, but when the, when the, when the taxpayers did approve the permanent improvement section, we made a commitment to preserve our buildings, and this is just one piece of a larger picture of making sure that we maintain our facilities. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Murdeth?
Yes.
Yes. And we have this, and we'll go to discussion items.
President Stone, the members of the board, the first item, A, the old policy 9160, very small change, but important change that we're asking for consideration, discussion tonight. What this policy allows me to do as superintendent is, let me get to it here.
Let's see.
It's simply a way it reads right now, public attendance at school events. It says that the board holds the legal authority to bar somebody from attendance or remove a person whose conduct may be a disruption. This basically gives the superintendent that right to also enact on the board's behalf to bar somebody from attending a school event. I already hold that right to keep somebody from coming on school grounds, but it was a missing piece of the, once you're in attendance, gives me the ability to keep somebody from coming back on if they're a disruption. So, that language will simply add me to that. And that's, I would just ask that to be discussed tonight and be potentially approved at our February. Any questions on that discussion? The second piece for discussion tonight, proposal for extended student trip, this is the annual district wrestling tournament, it's a state tournament. If we have any wrestlers involved in that, it would be on February 27, night of 20, the 22nd of February into the 23rd. The typed report is in your packet. Due to the way our meetings fell this year, I would potentially ask for a possible approval of that tonight so that, because our next meeting is not until February 28th. And this is an annual event. It's a state, the state wrestling districts, and would ask for any consideration for that to be discussed and answering questions and then potentially voting on tonight for approval.
Do you have a motion?
I'm moving to approve.
About a second.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Murdeth?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes. That item has passed.
Thank you.
I found it. Any communications this evening? How about announcements? We have the Education Foundation Chicken Dinner on the 26th. And aren't there usually music groups and all that?
We have three performances that evening. We have the high school choir, we have the little school vocal motion group, and we have the men's United in Harmony group singing that evening. So, we have three, two student groups and an adult group providing entertainment.
Good. Hope everybody comes out for that. And the chicken's good, too.
If anybody does need tickets, they're available for purchase at the board office or at the secondary building or on our true building.
And we have a motion to recess to executive session for ORC 1.1.22 for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee and to prepare for collective bargaining.
Madam President, if I may add, with the board's permission, the ability to discuss security issues affecting the district, and that's not the exact wording of that Ohio device code, but I would like to be able to address some issues in executive session.
Okay. We'll add that to them. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murdeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
And we are in recess. Thank you all for coming. And we will have no business afterward.